Is fundamental to this project to, uh, to download, to access, and then to interpret that information so that we actually have a real handle on the workload of, uh, the fire department. And so it's not anecdotal, it's not general, it's actually data-driven, very specific, very analytical, uh, extremely so, actually. And that becomes a starting point with competent information, then I, the ICMA professionals then, uh, take a look at that information, uh, look at best practices and so forth, and then make certain recommendations. Um, so, I just wanted to emphasize the data-driven, uh, nature of this project, which is what really sets it apart, that there is a statistical, a real world, a real-world experience, um, basis for the work that they have done. So with that introduction, um, we're ready for the presentation.
Yep. Uh, let's get a little housekeeping done before we start. Uh, the gentleman, uh, do you prefer, if members of the council have questions at the moment to, uh, to interrupt and catch it, or you'd rather we wait till some point with questions, or how do you prefer to handle a meeting?
It's your meeting, and however you normally do that is fine with me. I'll be doing, uh, both the presentations, so I'll just, I'll leave that to you, sir.
Okay. As a general rule, we, we allow the council to ask questions when it's fresh in their mind, and if that doesn't disturb your methodology, well, we'll continue to do that. Uh, today will, uh, be question time for the members of the council only because we'll be digesting this for sometime in the future, uh, working with our management team, while we probably will not do questions, uh, from the audience. So that said, go ahead.
My name is Leonard Matarice. I'm the Director of Research for the Center for Public Safety Management. Uh, ICMA, as I think you know, the International City-County Management Association is actually this year, uh, a 100-year-old professional association of public administrators with about 9,000 members worldwide in 32 countries. And since the inception of ICMA, uh, its mission has been to support local government in all the things that local government does, from parks and recreation to libraries to public works to economic development, and of course, one of the biggest areas is in the, in the area of public safety. Uh, our team is comprised of, as the manager said, um, a group of people who have extensive experience in the field, both in law enforcement and in public safety. I think you, you got a chance to meet Dr. McCabe, who did the police presentation for you. I should mention, as a follow-up on the data analysis, our quantitative analysis team is led by Dr. Dove Chelst, who has a PhD from Rutgers University. Uh, Dr. David Martin contributed to the report, Dr. Gong Wang, along with a team of three or four, uh, people who are specialists in data analysts, their names are in the inside of the report. Today's presentation is going to be made by the Senior Manager for Public, for Fire and EMS in the Center for Public Safety, Joe Pozo. Uh, Joe has a 37-year career in, uh, Fire EMS as a paramedic, uh, left as a battalion chief in, uh, Virginia Beach, Virginia, went on to be the Fire Chief in Portsmouth, Virginia, and then went from there to Loudoun County, Virginia, where he commanded a staff of 1,800 firefighters and 21 fire stations. Uh, when he retired from there, he came down to Florida, was the Chief of the Volusia County Fire Rescue Department, ultimately became the Deputy Director of Public Safety, which included not just Fire and EMS, but a wide range of public safety issues, including the Beach Patrol, the Coroner's Office, jails, and so forth. Um, I persuaded Joe to leave that and come to, uh, work with us, and he's been our Senior Manager and has been involved in this project with your Deputy Manager for almost two years. We've been talking to the city about studying some of the issues that, within your Fire and Police Department. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe Pozo.
Thank you, Leonard. Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten, Members of Council, City Manager and his staff. Uh, it's our pleasure to come here today and make this presentation on the Fire Operational Analysis. As the City Manager noted, and as Leonard just commented on, uh, much of this report, uh, is, is data workload analysis-driven. We make a lot of our recommendations based on that data and workload, uh, and then on the nuances of, uh, the particular city or county or town that, that we're working in. Uh, you have well over 100 pages to digest, as the mayor commented on, and it is quite a bit of information. Uh, and you have to take that information, uh, literally for what it is, again, because there is a lot of data. Uh, I will try to, to go over the high points of that data for you today, uh, and then, again, the nuances in your community. Uh, what drives staffing and deployment in your community, uh, what drives the, the types of calls that you have, how that compares nationally, uh, and I'll try to touch on some of that, and then what our key observations are. Uh, the staff for the, uh, for the project starts at the top, as always, with our Director, Tom Wazork, and Leonard Matarice, Director of Research and Development, Dr. Dove Chelst, and his team. And the data analysis team, uh, is led by Dr. Chelst, uh, but it also has Dr. Gong Wang, who, uh, really puts together all of the fire analysis that we do across the country. He's, he, he has done all of those reports. Uh, Dr. Steve Knight, uh, led the on-the-ground team that was here in February, along with Howard Dolly, and, uh, we asked Mr. Joe Stutler to come in, uh, who was a Wildland Subject Matter Expert, uh, to assist us with that portion of it. Uh, and then we have a, a full editing staff as well. What I'd like to do, take you through today, is, uh, simply what our methodology is for doing these projects, reports across the country, these studies that we do on Fire and EMS. Uh, just give you sort of what our key observations are. Uh, there's, there's 27 recommendations in the report. I won't touch on all of those today. Uh, some have, uh, what we think a little bit more priority than others, and that's typically the case in all of our communities. But there are some specific and key observations, uh, that we made while we were here that, that I would like to share with you today. I will spend some time on data and workload analysis, types of calls, uh, just the workload, uh, how much time you spend on those calls and things such as that. Uh, service demand, uh, which is an important part, uh, when you, when you talk about staffing and deploying fire departments, uh, your station response, uh, there's some, there's been some talk of proposed stations, uh, we took a look at that as well. Uh, your Wildland analysis, and I sort of, uh, I take all of those pieces, and if there was a key observation that we had that I thought fit, uh, along with what we were talking about, uh, I, I put that in there. And I'm also going to share with you, uh, just sort of when you're looking at staffing and deploying fire departments, some of the critical, uh, pieces that go with that. Uh, and, uh, so we'll spend a little bit of time on that. And then questions, as you may have them, uh, I'm certainly okay with, with you stopping me, uh, and, and we will, we will talk about all of that. Our methodology, uh, well, we usually begin with a, uh, an analysis of administrative and operational documents. Uh, we make a formal request to the Fire Chief, uh, and it's, it's everything from what's your daily routine, station locations, uh, how you spend your non-emergency time, strategic plans, uh, standard of cover plans, risk management plans, any of the planning documents that an agency may have. Uh, it's, it's really a, just, just a sort of, uh, alphabet soup of, uh, of documents. We make a formal data request. We get a raw, uh, computer-aided dispatch center data dump that our team of PhDs take, and they, they put all of that, take all of that information, and they build the data report, uh, that you have as an appendix in, in, in your, uh, formal document that you have in front of you. If you look at the last piece of that, uh, document, that's where all of the data work goes in, and that's just all raw CAD data. We also look at the National Fire Incident Reporting System, uh, fire reports that the Fire Department does for the same period, and we make a comparison to those, and we also gather data out of that. Uh, when you look at the types of fire calls, the types of VMS calls, we break that down as well, uh, particularly with the types of actual fire calls that you have, what the public service calls may be, uh, because you just get a number in front of you, but we also have a breakdown of that as well. So we take all of that, uh, and we try to get all of that completed before we do our onsite. Uh, we do an onsite visit, uh, we were here February 3rd, uh, through the 5th, and we did an onsite, we visit all the fire stations, we spend an extensive amount of time with the key staff, uh, that is here to learn as much as we can about the agency, uh, and, uh, we take all of that and we begin to formulate our operational analysis. We also do response and demand mapping, which you have in this report here. Uh, and I'll take you through all of that, all of that mapping, the demand mapping, uh, we'll show you where your calls are, where the, where they're concentrated, uh, and we also overlay the fire stations on top of that, so you have a sort of a general idea, uh, where, you know, where the calls are and how does that coverage match that, and we'll talk a little bit about that, because there is some, again, there were some proposed fire stations, uh, and we do have some recommendations on that for you as well. There's a lot of follow-up that goes on. I've spent, uh, quite a bit of time with your Deputy City Manager, uh, on this report, uh, just follow-up, making sure that what we hear, uh, what we read, and how we analyze things, uh, is really what's going on, because a lot of times, we don't hear it, uh, the way it's meant, we don't read it the way it's meant, so that's very technical information, so we, we do like to make sure that when we give you the report, it is as accurate as we can get it, and we work very closely with, uh, and we have worked very closely with city staff as well. To include your new Fire Chief, I've had two extensive conversations with him. Uh, then we take all of that, uh, we put it into a final document, and, uh, that is the document that you have in front of you. The purpose of this operational analysis, uh, this has been one of your, uh, budget priorities for two years, is to get recommendations, uh, so that you can take a look at those and, and look at the provision of Fire and Police Services, and where you can make improvements, identify your best practices, uh, what are the best practices that are being, uh, done nationally in fire departments and police departments, uh, to give you better outcomes to serve your citizens. And, uh, to create sort of a community-wide dialogue on public safety and how to adequately and, uh, and sustainably fund them, because that's important across the country. Uh, I, I can tell you that most of the projects, and we've done well over 100 projects, most of the projects that we do across the country is, how do we do this as cost-effectively as we can, as efficiently as we can? And are there any recommendations that you can give us that will help us achieve that outcome? That generally is why we do these. We do, do a lot of, we do some studies, uh, where it's more strategic planning, or if we need to build new fire stations, where's the best place to put those, and we do the mapping and the demand analysis for community, but generally is for exactly what you set out to do two years ago. And, and again, it was very clear to us, uh, the project's not intended to, not intended to reduce services or to reduce budgets, but rather, how can we effectively do this and, and make sure that we're efficiently doing it as well as a community? Some of our key observations. Well, first, uh, we found that the Prescott Fire Department provides excellent service to the community. It's well-respected, uh, by the citizens, by businesses, it's respected regionally. Uh, it's also recognized for the strong technical skills that your fire department has. Uh, and we, we did not hear anything different, uh, while the team was on the ground, uh, as we were doing our research, so you have a very, very well-respected fire department. Uh, you do have some employee relation concerns, we did a survey of the agency, uh, that's in the back of the document as an appendix as well, it's Appendix 2, that's, that's like the last, uh, probably seven or eight pages, uh, so I encourage you to take a look at that, uh, but we did note some things there. Our analysis tells us that that is, I think, short-term, uh, you've gone through some transition, uh, you've gone through, uh, some other things as a community with your fire department in the last year. Uh, so anytime you transition leadership, uh, you, you potentially do have some morale concerns, uh, some employee relation concerns, so we think that's short-term. Your new Fire Chief is very engaged at a very high level, uh, my two extensive conversations with him prove that. Uh, he's looking to the future, uh, he does have a vision for where he wants to take this agency. Uh, he has a, a proposed new organizational chart that we'll talk about, uh, so I think when you take that and you take, uh, some solid leadership and put that in front of this fire department, and that has a clear vision, uh, understands strategic planning and the planning pieces that go into staffing and deploying and managing a fire department, I think sort of some of those employee relation concerns will, uh, eventually go away. There's some administrative components that the agency can, uh, either complete or enhance, things like a community risk analysis of buildings and structures. We'll talk about risks today, risk analysis, risk of a community. And when we talk about staffing and employing a fire department, understanding the community's risk is the number-one piece that goes into staffing and employing a fire department, and that's across the country, whether you're a bedroom community, a community that, that has a robust downtown, that has a lot of high-rise office and apartment buildings, high life hazards, uh, or a community that has a, a Wildland urban interface, uh, issue or problem, whatever that risk is, the first thing that a fire department has to understand is, and a community has to understand, and a local government has to understand, is what's the risk? What is it that our mission is protecting and serving? Uh, so you have completed a, a Wildland risk analysis, and the next step is, is to do a risk analysis on your buildings and structures. Put all that together, then you'll have a very clear understanding of what the total risk in the community is. A standard of cover, which takes the risk analysis and articulates the expectations for service performance. The biggest piece of a standard of cover, which is, this is how we're going to staff and deploy our agency. And the staffing piece links to, what are the critical tasks that are needed to be performed on different types of structure fires or different types of fires, and we'll go over that a little bit, and I've got some models that I'll show you that just sort of spell that out in numbers of people. Incorporate all the department's strategic plans into a single document. We found that there's a strategic plan, there's a, there's a Wildland strategic plan, there's an operational technical rescue strategic plan, and all of those need to be sort of put together. Uh, what I observed is, this, the department, just overall strategic plan, has already sort of run its five-year course, uh, then there's a Wildland plan that has a separate five-year course, and an operational plan that has a separate five-year course, and it really should all be tied together, because that, that gives you the biggest snapshot of where's the agency, what are the goals and objectives, and where are we taking the agency in the future. And that's good for employee morale as well, and that sort of shores, you know, some of that, that, that feeling of, we're not really sure where we're going, we don't know what the vision is. You have one document you can look at, and everything is in there. Uh, review and enhance your performance measurement system. Benchmarking is important. Uh, that data analysis that we did is simply benchmarking your performance, but that's just one piece of it. It's, what are the actual goals of our performance, and what are we benchmarking against? And if it's 60% of the time, or 70% of the time, or we want to do this, you know, a certain percentage of the time, or we want our output to be this, you have to have something that you benchmark that against. And it's, it's good when you link that to your strategic goals and objectives, your strategic plan, and your budget plan, and all of that sort of comes together. It's very important in the fire service, uh, because there's so much money that's tied up in staffing and deploying a fire service, and, uh, council members and board of supervisors and commission members in the community often wants to know, well, what are we getting for that? You know, what, what, what is the fire department doing? What's the police department doing? And when you can show all of that, and we'll talk about, you know, some additional ways to sort of show what's going on in the fire department, it's very important that you can benchmark all of that. Which is the next bullet point, develop a system to document, not, to document non-emergency activities. Uh, I remember when I was a young firefighter in Virginia Beach Fire Department, then when I was a company officer, uh, we used to have these daily reports that we filled out, and then at the end of the month, it had, you know, all of the, all of the people hours that we did. People hours for, you know, how many hours did we spend on training? How many hours did we spend cleaning the fire station? How many hours did we spend on, uh, apparatus maintenance? How many hours did we spend on pre-fire planning? All of those non-emergency hours. Of course, at that time, I had no idea, you know, why are we doing this? This is just something that the Fire Chief's office wants. But Fire Chief used that, along with the City Manager's staff, to counsel, to show, here's how productive we are. These are all of the things the fire department does, and public education, training, equipment, uh, maintenance, building maintenance, that keeps, that, that reduces the budget, because all of the things that we were doing in the fire station and to the apparatus and public education may have meant we didn't have to hire another full-time person to do those things, because we were actually doing them at the company level. So it's very important that you have that, so that you can see it, the manager sees it, and the public sees it. Uh, so very important that you take all of these things and you link them all together Reorganization of the department, uh, to, to more effectively address programs, and we'll get into that a little bit later in the, in the discussion, uh, and a new proposed organizational chart, uh, but it is to manage programs. Uh, these are, we don't operate in silos in a fire service, and we should never operate in silos in a fire service, shift to shift, program to program, division to division, but your program managers, when you get to the senior level in a fire agency, Division Chief, et cetera, Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief, whatever title you want to do that, and you're at the top, right below the Fire Chief, you're running programs. That's your job. Your job is to manage and lead those programs, and I think what, uh, the Fire Chief has developed, uh, the new Fire Chief, uh, manages those programs a little bit more effectively, and it, and it takes some programs and puts some perhaps where they could be more effective in the Wildland piece, and, and I'll go over that with you. Uh, demand for your service is higher in the central core of the city, uh, that's probably not a surprise for you, just seeing, you know, where the units are responding, probably not a surprise, but it's important to understand where your current demand is, when you start thinking about where's the next fire station going to be built? Because you don't want to build a fire station where there's no demand. They're expensive capital projects, you have to staff them, and when you build a fire station and you staff it, you're staffing that fire station in perpetuity, because the community then expects you to staff that fire station, so you have to be very diligent now, and particularly in these economic times, where's the next fire station? What do we need to put in that fire station? And a lot of that's built on the risk around that fire station, and what's the actual demand for? So we'll go over that. Emergency medical services response is the highest response that you have, but that's pretty typical across the country in all fire departments, uh, and I'll show you that, and where you're at, you're at about 54, 55% of all of the responses are for EMS, uh, and that's with heavy fire apparatus. I've only done, I've only done one study in the country where EMS was not the largest percentage of calls, and that was only because they had an antiquated fire alarm system in the city, so they ran more fire alarms, actually, than they ran EMS calls, but that was it. If you took that nuance out, EMS calls would have been the highest, and that's just typically where we're at.
I have a question, real quick.
Yes, sir.
On EMS.
Yes, sir.
Is every, on, on, particularly our, our calls, were they all emergency?
No, sir.
Medical, or are they just, how does that classify?
They're emergency medical services calls, but they all weren't high-priority calls. And I've got a chart that's coming up, and I sort of, we sort of break that down for you, and I'll pick out sort of what the more basic life support calls are versus what probably the more advanced life support calls are. Mutual and automatic aid with your neighboring jurisdictions remains an essential component for what you do to make sure you have an effective response force, particularly when you get into building fires and structural fires and your Wildland responses. We'll talk a little bit more about that. However, that's a best practice across the country, and, and what you're doing with the county fire district, uh, with your stations 72 and 51, and, and how those are, are staffed, one owns one and is staffed by the other, uh, that's a, that's a, that's a excellent best practice, uh, if, if that, if that is sort of the, the right way to say that. That's an excellent practice to have, because you're using the resources where they need to be used for both jurisdictions, but then other mutual and automatic aid that you have. I was fortunate enough to work in the Northern Virginia area, the Washington DC metro area, and all of that is, is performed through mutual and automatic aid, all of the responses. Uh, it's, it's very seamless, uh, in fact, most of the CAD systems, if not all of the CAD systems now, uh, up there are all tied together. If there's a building fire or an emergency on the Arlington Fairfax County line, or Alexandria Fairfax County line, or where all three of those jurisdictions perhaps come together, then the closest units respond, whether that's command and control units, battalion chiefs, or ladder trucks, or EMS units, it doesn't matter, and, and there's no jurisdictional boundaries when that occurs. And that is a model system, uh, and you have that down in the Phoenix area. Those are model systems where you can share resources such as that, and, uh, and you're doing that, uh, so you, so you're, you're well on your way to that best practice. On average, and we'll go over it, the workload of units, the, the current workload of your units is not really at a critical point, uh, where immediate action is necessary to close any of the workload gaps. You have some travel time gaps, travel time meaning, you know, when you leave the fire station to get to the farthest point of a response district, et cetera, uh, there's some gaps there, but I don't know that the demand is there that really drives yet another fire station. That's a policy decision, obviously, uh, but I'll, but I have all the mapping, and we'll go over that. But I think on average, your, uh, your workload isn't driving it, and the demand really isn't driving it yet. Again, as we talked about, there's areas in the city that have extended unit travel times, particularly building fires, or if the first due unit is out on a call for that second engine to, to, to cross, you know, district lines or whatever, you know, there are some extended travel times. Uh, I'll show you the mapping on that, and, uh, and then we'll, we'll have a discussion on that. You do have a need to discuss, you know, some facility issues, you have some older facilities, I think you're aware of that, uh, and, you know, fire facilities, just in general, fire facilities, even brand-new fire facilities, are, are used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's as a, as a local government building, it's one of the, just one of your capital assets, that's probably one of your most heavily used, along with where your police, you know, switch shifts and, and things such as that. They're just constantly used, in and out all day long. Uh, and you do have some facility issues, and, in the 27 recommendations, the recommendations for each facility are not in there. Uh, what, what we did, because each of them is, is, has some similar, um, but different facility recommendations, we just listed that as we discussed each one of your facilities for you. The Wildland fuels mitigation program, uh, and ensuring a defensible community should remain a priority and is a priority, and should never not be a priority. Uh, I, you know, just driving up here, I was showing Leonard, uh, you know, just how some of the structures are on hills, et cetera, you know, with, with, there is no defensible 30 feet, as, as might be suggested in the Firewise program, et cetera. So that's something that you really have to focus on, and that has to have a focus. Uh, you know, we can, we could talk about, you know, the fire problem, uh, all day long, but the best way to take care of a fire problem, whether it's a Wildland fire problem or a single-family dwelling fire problem, is prevention, education, making sure that people understand that if you're in a Wildland urban interface area, that you have a responsibility to defend your property, and that's not letting, uh, certain vegetation with overgrowth, and not letting certain vegetation be within so many feet of your house is what's recommended in all these programs. Many communities go, have gone to residential sprinkler ordinances for all new construction, because they want that prevention piece in place, and they feel that that's a, that that prevention piece will make their fire department more efficient, and will make the staffing and employment of that fire department more efficient. Because if you have a whole community or a whole neighborhood, a whole subdivision that's new, and they have residential sprinklers, then the- then the fire problem there is much less than a community or a neighborhood that does not. And so you can sort of centralize your staffing around that. There's a lot of different ways to staff and employ fire departments. Again, we've given you twenty-seven recommendations to assist you and the fire department addressing what our key observations are and anything else discussed in the report. The recommendations, and that's what we do for you. When we leave here today, we don't leave the community. If there's more questions, if there's things that you want us to look into or what have you, then we continue to do that. I continue to work with managers and, and communities across the country that I did studies for to this day. They may just have a question or they want to go back to the data or, hey, we're really now thinking about building this fire station. You gave us a recommendation, you know, what do you think? So we just won't leave you today. We will stay with you and continue assisting you. So let's get to the data. And these are the types of calls that you run. And as I said, about fifty-four percent of your calls are EMS, sixteen percent are fire calls. And then you have thirty percent that are automatic aid, either received or given. We added the received in there. That's your station fifty-one that is staffed by the county. And we included them in the study because they're an integral part of the response and the response patterns that you have in the, in the central core of the city. But if you take a look at that and to answer the councilman's question, the majority of your calls, if you look at the EMS calls, fall and injury, illness and other, the majority of your calls there in EMS are, those are typically your more basic life support calls. Even the overdose and psychiatric calls you could, you could group in there as well. And as well, some of the motor vehicle accident calls. So the majority of your calls are of the basic life support nature. Now, some of those calls could have turned into advanced life support, obviously. But if you look at it sort of in totality, most of them are the basic life support. Yes, sir?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With regards to EMS type calls, statistically, did you guys have the ability or take the opportunity to find out what percentage of our calls are going to rehabilitation-type facilities that are offered in the city?
Right now, I don't have that answer for you. We probably have that in our data and I can send that back to you. Just, just having a conversation today with the Fire Chief, he was telling me that, of that particular concern that you may be having. So I can get that for you. And if you, and if you would allow me to bring that, to send that to the deputy city manager and have her perhaps report back, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. That's an important statistic to have at our disposal.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jean. Yes, ma'am.
Is there an overlap between automatic aid received and given and the fire categories?
An overlap as?
In the, in the data.
No, ma'am, that is, those are, those are separate numbers.
Okay.
Do we have the data that shows the illness and other? I'm really curious of what the other is.
I could get that breakdown for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess I might as well get one in there too.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did any of, when you're collecting this data, did it reflect our frequent flyers? You know, when I went out with, with one fire company, they, we responded to a guy and they say, yeah, we service him two to three hundred times a year, sometimes three times a day.
That is, that is, that is in the data as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Would you like anything specific on that back?
No, just because I can see if it's three hundred, I mean cardiac stroke for all years represented there.
And there are some, when you look at the demand map, you know where these facilities are and you know where some of these people are and you'll see that pop up in the demand map. You know, where particularly the EMS calls, there are, there, there's not a great demand for fire calls in a block, but the EMS calls, there is a demand in that block. So that obviously shows that there is either a facility or there is a, you know, there's a, there's a person there or persons that frequently use EMS as a service.
And I want to just add, there are, there are some good examples of fire departments, and I'm sure you, Fire Chief, are aware of these, that have strategies to deal with that. The answer is not to keep going back. The answer is to come up with alternative strategy to prevent that from happening. And there are some real good examples around the country that if you take a look at it, see that there are ways to prevent that passing through the fire return. The answer is just not to keep going back. Same thing on the police side. You know, years ago, we used to just keep going back to the same call over and over again. And along with the side, we know there are other things you can do other than just convenient stuff.
The Phoenix area has, there's a couple of departments there that are doing some, some sort of out-of-the-box things to address that particular problem. Because it's expensive. It's expensive to put a heavy piece of fire apparatus on the road to go to the same facility, you know, five, six, seven times a day or to, you know, go to the same address five or six times a week. It is, it's very expensive. So there are some, there are some different ways that you can address that. But we'll get that breakdown for you. That, that's important. On, on fires, the greatest percentage of your fire calls are, as you see, non-fire calls. Hazard, false alarms, which are fire alarms, good intent. You know, I, I think I smell something or something doesn't look right, you know, my neighbor's yard, and so dispatch sends the fire department.
Would it smelling, would gas be a?
Smelling of gas is, is that type of call. It, it could be. Now, a lot of that is how it's labeled in the fire incident report. It could come in as a, could come in as a structure fire call and they get there and it really isn't anything and then they label it something else, which is appropriate. I mean, you should appropriately label and tag the call as it is. But the greatest percentage for structure and outside fire, you know, that, that makes up just less than one percent of the total fire calls that you run. And I did break down the outside fires, particularly because I really wanted to see how many of those were the grass or wildland fires because that would be in that category. And so out of those forty-four calls, there's about twenty-six of those were the grass or wildland fires. And I know the Fire Chief, just in a conversation with him, he's even going a little bit further. He's going to look into, when we get those fires, what's the area of the fire? Is that an acre? How many are two or three or four acre fires when we get there? Because, you know, typically in a wildland fire, sometimes it's not seen until, you know, you're already a half acre or an acre. You know, if it's a lightning strike or something like that. So, you know, that's an important piece as well because, you know, what's burning and how much is burning when you get there on a wildland fire really is whether we can control this or we can't control it with the resources that we have or do we need more immediate resources? And then, you know, when do we call the forestry service in and, and situations such as that? So that's an important piece to look at. The nice thing about data is, and, and I appreciate your questions because the nice thing about data is when you dig deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper into data, you really can get the picture. When you look at structure fires, what I always like to look at is it's a structure fire. And in, in thirty-two structure fires, how many times did the fire department put the fire out? Of those thirty-two?
Probably thirty-two.
It's never thirty-two. Because frequently, when, when the fire department shows up, what was a reported structure fire, when you get there, isn't a structure fire. Or you put it out with a garden hose or it was a kitchen fire and it was put out with a fire extinguisher by the occupant. So, so even that, as you, as you begin to dig down, you know, it really starts to tell more of the story. And the outside fires, you know, when you dig down into outside fires or you dig down into the public service call, seven hundred and seventy-six public service call, what were they? And, you know, do we need, do we need a full, you know, complement of fire equipment to go to that? That's when you start, as Leonard was saying, you take the EMS calls that you're going to and the policy decision is, do we go to all the EMS calls from now on? And that's a policy decision. I've done presentations to, to councils and they want to go to everything. And then I've done presentations where they don't want to go to everything. And so how do we not go to everything? You know, what, how do we, how do we not do this? And so it's a big question.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since you brought up policy, et cetera. Keeping in mind that Prescott is a great community and I don't mean to be rude to anybody in the public, but we're a very old community. And I don't mean old from when we were founded. I mean old because that's what lives here, a lot of old people. Every call's important because you don't know. You have no idea what, where some of the demographic information taken into consideration with, with what you're giving us here, the fact that, for example, right at seventy percent of all single-family occupied dwellings are occupied by two or less people in the city of Prescott. Now, I'm not talking about the county and I'm not talking about neighboring communities. I'm talking about Prescott. That's what I'm elected to, to serve as the citizens of Prescott. That has me very concerned if, for, for example, it's like wildland. We, we live right in the middle of the woods. Of course, we're going to concentrate on keeping the community safe from, from fire. And it's the same thing with the demographic of the aged that happens to live in Prescott. They're a whole lot more susceptible to going into cardiac arrest or having a stroke or something because something that would seem fairly innocuous took place that day at that moment.
You have to have a very good, for EMS, medical priority dispatch system in place at the communications center, which we recommend in this report, at the communications center that screens those calls, certified and trained, experienced call takers that when they take that call, they ask the right questions which are, which are outlined for them under this system. And then they dispatch the most appropriate resource, understanding what the call taker is telling them and their ability to get out of that call taker what, what is going on. And when you have that in place, it works. The city of Richmond, Virginia has that so refined that they're able to go through an EMS call and get down to what really is the problem and what resource do you really need? And if it's just a ride to the hospital or to your dialysis center to get that taken care of, we'll do that for you. We'll, we'll make that call for you. But you don't need an ambulance because that ties up a critical resource. So it's very important that you have that system in place.
We are asking those questions at dispatch, I thought.
You're asking them, but, but there's, there's another system that, that you can, you can add to the current system that you have. The current system that you have is a manual system. And there's a software system that, that makes that, that makes that process quicker. And, and it gets you to where you need to get more accurately. Your calls per day, pretty typical across the country between about eight in the morning and eight in the evening is, is when your heaviest workload is. Again, that's not anything different than what's going on around the country. And the annual deployed time by call type, this is, this is your work, this is your workload. This is what, this is what's going on. And if you just kind of go all the way over to the right-hand column, your runs per day, and that, that just will sort of tell you. You run, you run about fourteen EMS calls a day and about five fire calls a day. And out of those EMS calls, again, you can see what the highest number of calls you run, those illness and other, fallen injury, motor vehicle accidents. And your fire calls, pretty much public service, good intent, false alarm, your fire alarm calls, et cetera. And you get about four point one mutual aid or automatic aid calls a day. So that, that sort of, sort of wraps up. Now, when you look at the deployed minutes per day on, you know, EMS call total, and this is, this is all of the companies together, you have about four hundred and ninety-three minutes a day that's, that's tied up on EMS calls and about a hundred and fifty minutes a day tied up on fire calls. So that's the important piece about, when I was telling you about that non-emergency productivity report, when you take the emergency productivity which we've given you, then you match the non-emergency productivity. It accounts for all the hours in the day, given that there's a certain amount of hours that we know are downtime in the fire service. But it, but it sort of gives you the total picture, which I think is important. And I always felt that was important as a Fire Chief, that everybody understood, particularly the elected body, understood fully, here's what the fire department is doing in, in a twenty-four hour period, in a three hundred and sixty-five day period, here's what we're doing totally. And here's all the programs we're involved with. And here's our workload as far as what are our EMS calls? What are our fire calls? Average response times. Now, there's two different things we, that we, there's two different pieces we give you on when we talk about response time. There's the average response time, which typically is at the fifty or sixty percentile. And then there's the ninetieth percentile, which is what, when you, when you hear NFPA seventeen-ten standard or accreditation standard, those are all, all the response times and travel times and dispatch times are all fractile. And that's, that's a, that's a decision that communities make. You know, do we want to be at the ninetieth percentile? Do we want to be at the eightieth or seventieth percentile? That, that, you know, and what's the time that we want to do? You can strive to meet those, those benchmark standards, okay? And then there are benchmarks. This sort of gives you average. And on average, you're, you're very good on average. Your dispatch time, which is the time they pick the phone up until the time they dispatch units, which is, which, when you benchmark that against the standards, is about sixty, is sixty seconds. So, so you're right there on your, on your average time. And turnout time, sixty seconds CMS calls, eighty seconds on fire calls, given that they have to dom, you know, personal protective gear and whatnot. You're not too far off of that. In fact, you're right on that. So that's very good. Your travel times, just your average travel times, and this is, once they put it in drive and they leave the station until they arrive on the scene. Again, if you want to benchmark that against what the national four-minute travel time is, you're not, you're not really that far off. And you have, taking into consideration, you have some long response times just because of where your stations are and how you've annexed and grown your community. There are some, there are some stations that do have that. So that, that does affect the average. So when you look at sort of average, you have some very good times.
I may be jumping ahead here, but which one of these is a factor in our fire rating for insurance purposes?
The fire rating that you, that you currently have right now doesn't, doesn't really take into account what response times are. They look at linear miles between fire stations built upon areas that one and a half miles for engine companies and two and a half for ladder companies. What they, what they look at now in the current rating is they do take some of this information into account, particularly if you start to get out of that one and a half mile, you know, what, what is your travel time? Because you may have a very good road network. Because road network has a lot to do with travel time as well. You can have a very good road network and not be one and a half miles in a built-upon area and be able to serve in a, in a reasonable time in that, in that four to six-minute time period. So this type of data, they do not look at. They're more, where are they located in linear miles?
One, one other question. Was it, were these, was this data taken with, in respects of us helping other departments and agencies?
This is, this is from your fire stations.
Okay.
And is this, is this nine-one-one? Is this all nine-one-one?
All CAD data, yes, sir.
Okay, so like when it's public service or whatever, they're not calling a non-emergency number?
They may have responded non-emergency to those types of calls, yes, sir.
One additional follow-up.
Yes.
Is this response time all calls where the engines originating from a station? Or is this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The ninetieth percentile, you see changes just a little bit because what you're saying is that ninety percent of the time we are, if you just look at structure fire, our travel time is ten and a half minutes or less ninety percent of the time. So it does climb up a little bit because it's a more stricter way to look at how your response times are. We do this so you can make a comparison between average and you can, and ninetieth percentile. We also give you a chart in the report. That's a cumulative response where it has the fire and the EMS calls, and you can draw a line wherever you want to at 60% or 70%. And then anything below that is what you would typically respond to at 70% of the time or 80% of the time. And that helps in decision-making because getting to the 90th percentile is difficult, particularly in communities that are spread out. It may have some rural areas, and they may have some suburban areas and some urban areas. And you can have that mix in a community. That happens all across the country, so they struggle to get to the 90th percentile. So this is just a stricter way, a more stricter way to look at it. Now, this is very important. Demand is one of those critical pieces for how do we staff and deploy? Where are the calls happening? Where are the fire stations? When you take risk and you match it to demand, that really tells you, what does our response look like? If you were to go out and look at all of the buildings and structures in your community, which we recommended, how many are single-family dwelling apartments, apartments that are over three or four stories, high-rises, protected high-rises, meaning are they sprinkled or non-sprinkled, what are high life hazards, et cetera? And you plotted those with your demand and then with your travel time, which is coming up. Then you can really get a good, very good picture of what does our community look like? Now, we know where the calls are. We know what our risk is. You can even brush the wildland risk around your community. Now, we really know what we have. We couldn't do that because you haven't done the structural sort of risk analysis. You've done the wildland risk analysis, and you know what that is. But here's where your demand is. So Station 71, 72, and 74 have most of the demand. And if you put 51 in there, then they share in that demand as well, where that station is located. Now, Station 75 doesn't have as much demand, obviously, as what you have in the central core of the response area. There is a pocket down there where it's a little bit higher than what's around it, and the same is in 73's area as well. But they certainly aren't as busy as the other stations. Not that you don't need fire protection in those areas because you have to account for what's the travel time and are there any other risk in that area. EMS sort of mirrors this. Sort of mirrors this. There is one little, there is a difference. If you look up into the northeast section, there's 144 calls in that one block, and they really didn't have a high fire demand up there as well. So there's something in there driving some calls. There's a couple of blocks in 75's area that's driving some additional calls. And then, of course, the core sort of matches what your fire demand is because that's where probably your heaviest population is, your business district, et cetera. So that all sort of mirrors, you know, what you have. So this tells you, this is where your demand is. So you start to think about, well, there's some proposed fire stations that, you know, are based on geographics, which is okay. You have to start there. You have to start geographically from other fire stations. If you want to use the one and a half mile of the built-upon area, that's okay. But you also have to consider what's the risk in any of these areas and what's the demand. And we've given you at least a snapshot of what the demand is for the study period that we did. Staffing, another piece that you have to look at, and these are just simply numbers. And this table sort of runs in a couple of different areas, but I want you to focus in on today, which is the minimum number of personnel per shift. Or when we were here in February, when we grabbed a snapshot in February, this is what we have. You have 19 to 20 people on the shifts. There's 19 on two shifts and 20 on another, or some number as that goes. That total, 57, okay? And when you look at that, you staff five stations, five engines, or you cross-staff in some a ladder truck as well. And you have a battalion chief. You have an ORF truck that you staff in certain hours of the daytime. So that gives you 17 minimum staffing per day, okay? Then you have the extra people, which some agencies call overstaffing, that are there to cover vacancies created by vacation leave or sick leave, or somebody's out for long-term, you know, either an on-the-job injury or an off-the-job illness or what have you. So the policy decision there always is, do we want to carry extra people to cover those vacancies, or will we rather do that in overtime? And I've done it both ways. I've mixed both ways. So there's no real decision point there, other than it really is just what is it that we're willing to do or what do we want to do? Either way is okay. What we've done for you is, is we've applied a staffing multiplier. There's a formula that we use. It's a national formula that you take a year's worth of leave data, and you take that leave data and the number of hours a year that an employee is scheduled for in the 24-hour shifts, and you plug all of that in, and it gives you a staffing factor. And that staffing factor tells you, this is what you need in additional resources to staff each company, or additional resources on a shift to staff. To do it, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, the staffing factor is 3.23. That's an aggregate staffing factor for Prescott. Broken down, and I broke that down a little bit more, it's 1.076 per riding position. And when you do the math and you multiply that out, it's 55 people for operations if you wanted to include a staffing factor. Now, that doesn't mean that you can do away with overtime because your current staffing capacity is one to two people, and at 55, it's one to two people. That plus two just says that if you went to a staffing factor formula, you would have two additional people. We're not saying that you do any reduction in force or any of that. Because what happens with the staffing factor is, is that you're using, it's a very good foundational model to use, particularly if you took two or three years' worth of leave and you went through all of that. It would help you establish a historical value of, you know, how much time off actually occurred. There's always going to be a little bit more because there's always a long-term injury that you can't, or a long-term situation that you can't predict, et cetera. So this is a sort of general staffing factor that we've given you, and it's a formula that should be used year to year because it helps you set your overtime budget, it helps you set your relief factor, et cetera. We recommend that you stay at the current 17, 16, 17 in the daytime, 16 in the evening when that ORF unit goes out of service. Even that person is used, you know, to fill in where there's a vacation slot or a vacancy. So we don't recommend that you do anything less than that. We talked about critical tasking. We talked about, you know, the staffing that's required for risk. And the National Fire Protection Association manual really identifies, and when you go through the accreditation process, the Center for Public Safety Excellence has a, how they rate particular structures, low, moderate, high, et cetera. And it gives you sort of a staffing formula to use against that, you know, that type of emergency that you may be responding to or that type of risk. NFPA 1710 is built around a moderate-risk house. That's what that, you know, when they call for 16 to 17 people on a scene and so much staffing on a unit, it's built around that moderate-risk structure fire, a house without a basement.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have some kind of handle or understanding on a community of our size, whether that false alarm call number is high or low? And in any case, what are other communities doing to take that number down?
That's about average. You know, if you looked at the size of the community and the types of, what your population is and the types of businesses you have that drive that number, that's about average. Some communities, to reduce the repeat offenders, so to speak, they have ordinances in place that, sort of like what police departments do for the same thing, that the first time we respond, we'll go and we'll mitigate whatever the alarm is. The second, third, fourth, and fifth times, there may be a fine imposed for that. And that puts the accountability back on the business owner to make sure that the alarm system, the smoke detectors, heat detectors, whatever systems they have in place, sprinkler systems are monitored correctly and they're properly maintained. Because a lot of the repeat offenders, it's just systems that aren't properly maintained. So it puts an accountability back on.
It would seem like that would be a huge cost to the company when you're talking about repositioning engine companies.
Yes, sir.
Based upon a false alarm and people moving up.
Yes, sir. And communities across the country have also reduced responses. They'll go to a single-engine response now on, 10, 15, 20 years ago, if you got a fire alarm in a business structure or a high-rise structure, a hotel, you'd send a full structural fire complement, lights and siren to that call. Then, as more and more cities and counties became self-insured or they recognized, you know, there's a great risk to putting, you know, seven or eight pieces of heavy fire equipment on the road, you know, five, six, seven times a day, going to these fire alarms that routinely turn out to be, you know, just a reset of an alarm system. So they reduce that to a single-engine response or a single-engine and a ladder response, et cetera. Or the first engine may go with lights and siren, and any other responding units go with no lights and siren. They just go normal, okay? And I spoke to your fire chief, and I think those are all sorts of things I think that he's looking at to make sure that there's some efficiency in it, but you still remain as effective as you currently are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. But we, you know, again, you know, just sort of what the fire calls are. And if you just sort of look at, you know, this is critical tasking. And critical tasking is, when you get a low-risk fire, like a shed fire, what's really required for that? And what this shows is, is a single-engine company with an incident commander, perhaps, four people, which is sort of your typical engine company staffing of three, and attack line, you put the fire out. It moves up a notch, you know, when you get to the moderate-risk, two-story-house fire because there are some other things that have to occur. You have to have an initial attack line. You have to have a backup line. There's some ventilation that is required to be done. There's a search and rescue team. You've got a rapid intervention team for the firefighters that are operating inside. You have an incident commander. So this is where you start to get the count of people. You know, how many people does it really take, okay, to do this? And when you look at the standards, this is what they're benchmarking against, is called critical tasking. When you get up to the high risk, there's communities such as Prescott, communities, you know, of the 50, 60, 70, 100, 150,000, you know, population range. When you have high risk, you know, typically, you may be able to staff and deploy for that. You may not be able to staff and deploy for that. But you depend on, or you have agreements in place, mutual aid agreements in place, automatic aid agreements in place. So if you do have that actual fire or emergency in that type of risk, then you can get the resources on the ground to manage and mitigate that risk. Same thing applies to wildland fires. Same thing. It's a risk, and you have to look at what that risk is and what's our initial response? What's our effective firefighting response? You see what it is for moderate risk, and you can handle this all day long here, okay, with what you currently have. Same thing with a wildland risk, two or three acres, four acres. Even if you have a wildland urban interface issue, okay, where you have structures involved, okay? That takes a response to protect those structures and then to mitigate the emergency. In Florida, where I'm from, it's the same thing. We build our fire departments around, for wildland fires, managing the urban interface risk. Structural protection is the first priority. It's a little different because of the way the forestry service responds, because it's flat, okay? So you can get tractors and plows, and you can cut a line around a fire and then let it burn on the inside.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
All right. In your analysis, did you take into consideration the failure of the National Forest Service and the BLM agency?
No, sir.
And some of all that stuff that haven't done their job on managing the fuels that subject not only our firemen, but our communities to harm's way?
Well, we took into consideration just what the actual issues are, which is everything that you're saying. And when we get into the wildland section, that is getting the mitigation, the fuels mitigation program, to do that fuels mitigation, and then to educate the public on what their responsibility is as well. When you have a structure, you have a building, and it's in one of those areas, what the FireWise program is, educating them, you need to do these things because it helps us and it helps protect your structure. We took into consideration all of that. We did not do an analysis on the state forestry service or any of those external agencies, no, sir.
Thank you for answering that frankly, because as a matter of fact, from my perspective, our community's been put in harm's way by the negligence of a number of other agencies. But our job is to be able to respond to the things that put our residents in harm's way, not be dependent on the federal and the state agencies. So I appreciate your candor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. For EMS calls, and the councilman asked, you know, what are EMS calls? You know, what's critical, what's non-critical? Typically, in the cardiac and stroke, seizure, unconscious, breathing difficulty types of calls, you know, to have an effective force there to handle that emergency sometimes goes beyond two, okay? I worked as a medic many years ago in the city of Norfolk, Virginia, and, you know, same thing. We had an engine company response on the critical calls, and then, you know, on the other calls, there was just, there was two of us. And so you do run into calls that our dispatch is a basic call, as the mayor Protem pointed out, that turn into an advanced call. But when you have that type of situation, when the ambulance service has that type of situation, you have to be able to identify that immediately and call for help. And then you get the engine company response that has the additional people who have the advanced life support training that can assist you. There's all sorts of things you can be doing before you get that help, even if it's a cardiac arrest, even if it's just doing CPR. Because you have to have good basic life support first before any of the advanced life support works. That's the primary piece, okay? That's the primary piece. But if you look at sort of what you're responding to, you know, the question is, do we have to respond to all that 31.7% of calls? And I think that's an analysis. We've given you the types of numbers. We'll get you the breakdown on those types of calls, but I think, you know, the question is, do you have to respond to all of those? Currently, you do. Currently, you do. You know that they're more basic. The critical tasking for that is, is that generally, the ambulance crew can handle that, okay?
So you're saying that our current policy is that we respond to 100%?
You respond to everything. Yes, sir. You respond to everything, yes, sir.
Whether it's a broken pipe or?
Yes, sir.
It has nothing to do with medical, somebody needs lifting something up?
Yes, sir.
But you know what, when you come down to some of these, uh, just, I, once again, when I did a ride-along, we responded to a guy thought he was having a heart attack and, uh, the only way to get him out was there was like twelve steps that had to be go down.
Sure.
And two people can't.
Getting them down, absolutely.
And when minutes count, I mean, that's the only thing I worry about, uh, because most of them, probably two people could take advantage of it, but, uh, what happens when that, that one guy that can't, does he?
You're absolutely right. Generally, you know, generally you err to the side of safety.
Yeah.
And, and that generally is what occurs in cities and counties across the country. Again, though, uh, having, having that, that call taker, understanding what the situation is, if they understand that it's a heavy patient and you've got to move them, then, you know, that, that's a signal that we're going to need more than the ambulance and we should dispatch an engine company where we may not normally dispatch an engine company.
Well, because I guess we're responding to a lot of, I, I fall in and I can't get up at care centers.
Again, understanding the demographic of the city. Ten percent response time for cardiac and stroke seems a little concerning to me, so I just throw that out there.
Okay, all right. Well, this is your data.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, and some, just some key observations. Uh, again, uh, the fire department should complete a fire community risk assessment, building and structures, we talked about that, and what the criticality of that is and how that should go with the wildland assessment. Then you have, you have the picture of what your risk is. Utilize, utilize a risk-based strategy, again, to continue to refine your decision matrix for outlining which types of service requests you go to, which ones go with lights and sirens, maybe which ones don't go with lights and sirens. I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can, you can sort of attack what your response issues or concerns may be. And we recommend that, that you look at, because your demand is different, you know, you have areas that have less demand than you have, that have more demand, and there's other ways to, to, to dispatch and move units around other than just responding from fixed fire stations, uh, as a, as a sort of everyday concept, okay? You can dynamically deploy units, move them around to where the highest demand is, you can even do that historically by, uh, you know, where the calls are historically, you can move units around and what time of day they, they historically happen. Uh, so there's a lot of different ways you can do this, that's, that's software-driven and that's something that, you know, the communication center would have to invest in, uh, but there are different, there are different deployment methods other than the traditional deployment that you're currently doing. Some fire departments are doing that across the country as well.
But you know, looking at that map that you showed, it looks like our firehouses are in about the right spot.
They are, they are, they are, and we, and we, well, you're going to see a little bit more here as we look at what the travel times are. No, no, you, no, you made a good point, uh, and we're getting ready to get to that. Uh, you know, with, with, with all of the, um, you know, Affordable Care Act, there are, we, we did a section on that, uh, for you to take a look at and what some alternatives could be, uh, but that really hasn't been totally defined yet and, you know, what any funding that may be in that or not in that. Typically, across the country, uh, you hear, city managers here, county administrators here, you know, fire, the fire department should be doing the transport. You have a, you know, you have a private company that does your transport now, fire department should be doing the transport. If you want to get into that, then there's a, there's a, there's a lot of pieces that you have to consider with that. There is revenue that can be generated there, but typically the revenue does not outweigh what the expense is. Does not outweigh what the expense is, because when you go for the, when you do the actual billing piece, and we don't know what the future really is going to be for, for ambulance billing, um, there's a lot of, uh, legislative rules and regulations that go into ambulance billing. And you don't get back what you bill for on every bill. You can have an eight-hundred-dollar advanced life support bill, uh, but typically the insurance companies and everybody in, in most insurance policies, there's a certain amount that they'll pay for an ambulance, uh, transport, Medicare only pays a certain fixed amount, then the decision is, do we bill for the rest? So there's a lot that goes into it, there's a staffing piece that goes into it, unless you're willing to staff with what your current staffing is, which means you're not going to staff fire engines, then you have to hire staff. So there's a lot that goes into that. There's another piece also, uh, about the, the addresses that you go to over and over again, uh, you know, hospitals and readmitting, readmitting people to the hospital, uh, and what the Affordable Care Act and the fines that are involved in that. They're looking for, um, you know, these alternate, uh, care centers or, or, or places to go so that if you just were released from the hospital and you're calling to go back to the hospital, do we take them back to the hospital and risk a fine to the hospital or do they go someplace else so they can be checked and should the fire department be involved in that or EMS services be involved in that? There's a lot of things that are involved in all of that, takes a real critical analysis before there's any decisions to get into that. We point that out, uh, to you in the report and what your decision matrix on that should be. Not recommending that you go, uh, one way or the other on that. All right, travel times, fire stations in the right places, we look at four, six, and eight-minute travel times. The four-minute travel times, that's your NFPA 1710 benchmark, benchmark. And it's two-hundred-and-forty seconds of the first arriving unit getting to, um, getting to the structure fire, getting to the emergency, same for EMS. And if you just sort of look at the map, you can see, uh, the outline of your city, you can see where the stations are, uh, I included, um, station fifty-one in that because of the, the, the automatic aid, and just sort of what your four-minute travel time is, okay? And then it just sort of goes to six minutes, which you can see it begins to fill in, and I like to use the six-minute travel time, uh, because it, it's, it, for, for a lot of communities, it's just a little bit more realistic. You want to be able to hit that benchmark, but it's a little bit more realistic for that first arriving unit and you have some pretty good coverage there. When you go to eight minutes, we include eight minutes for, for two reasons. One, just so you can make that comparison for six and eight minutes. But the NFPA 1710 benchmark is you should be able to collect the initial first alarm assignment to a building or structure fire in eight minutes. And you have some pretty, pretty good coverage there, particularly in the core of the city where your demand is. So we give you this, this is our, this is just an analysis of where your fire stations are and, you know, what your travel times are from, from station to station. Now, now I mentioned that, you know, if station seventy-three is out, then from, for, you know, for station seventy-four to get over there, you're probably going to be getting into that eight or nine or ten-minute travel time, okay? But that occurs, and that occurs all across the country. Unless you're in a urban setting where you have, you have the ability to have those fire stations every city block or every one mile or every one and a half miles. And then if you sort of just drop it all over, um, all the overlays together, you just sort of see how it fills in. Again, the four is that, that sort of reddish, purplish color there and then the green and then the blue. Future and proposed stations, if you just look at this, uh, you know, you have three proposed stations and if you go back to where your demand is, and this is on, this is just your fire demand map, and if you look at the red boxes there, the little fire station symbols, those are where your proposed stations is, they're proposing stations in some areas that don't have, that don't have high demand yet, okay? Now, future planning, future growth or what have you, might drive that. But before you make those policy decisions on the, where the next fire station is or what are we going to do, take the travel times that you currently have, any analysis we did, and what's the demand? And, you know, has that demand increased any? We don't see any pressing need yet to expand your station locations. We think that you should continue to monitor your call demand and travel times, that's, that's, those are the two critical pieces, continue automatic and mutual aid, uh, which is a best practice, particularly in the core of the city where you have station fifty-one. And the services that they are providing to you and then the return services that you provide to them. What drives staffing and, and deployment of resources in the fire services? A couple of critical pieces, and we've already talked about most of these. What's your risk? That's the first question. What's the risk? What's the fire risk? What's the call demand? Where are the calls at? Do we, do we need that other station? Or do we need just another piece of equipment someplace to help alleviate that, that, that demand? Does it have to be a fire engine? A full piece of apparatus or, or can it be a smaller quick-response vehicle to handle some of those lower-grade calls? The lower-grade EMS calls, the lower-grade fire calls, okay? So there's a lot of different alternatives that you can use. What's the workload of all the units? And again, we didn't see a pressing, critical workload, um, issue in any of the, any of the five stations or any of the five engine companies. Travel times from fire stations, that's a big one, and, and you just saw your map, so as you start to, to look at where's the next fire station, you need to compare what your risk is, what your demand is, and then what are the travel times? Any standards, OSHA requirements, if you are state OSHA or ISO, uh, the councilwoman asked about ISO, and those are always considerations, they're benchmarking considerations. When you look at your ISO report, look at it as it should be looked at. And that is, it's broken down into three areas, water, communications, and the fire department. Typically, you get, if, if you have a good hydrant system, if a community has a good hydrant system, which is what they, was what they're measuring, get a very good score. If you get good flows, they're all properly placed. If you have a good communication system and they have a whole matrix they go through on the communication system. If you, if, if you're adequately staffed, you have all the, the right amount of incoming lines, et cetera, have a computer-aided dispatch, you get a good score. Look at a fire department score. Typically, that fire department score, whatever the, whatever, whatever the, the scores are, typically is what, is what either drives a higher ISO rating or a, a, a middle-of-the-road or lower ISO rating. So you really have to look at that, okay? That, that's, that, that a lot of times is the key, is the key piece. What's the EMS demand? Why does that matter? Well, you see why it matters, because of the type of calls you're responding to, and what is the EMS demand? Is it lower priority calls or is it the higher priority calls? What critical tasking do you need? That ties to the risk. If it's a bedroom community, okay, you don't have a lot of, a lot of high-rise or high-life, high-risk structures, it's this sort of suburban bedroom community, that doesn't take the, the high-level, the, the high-risk staffing, critical tasking, takes that moderate, which you saw, three engine companies, you can, you can handle those types of calls. The ability for you to fund it, ability for the community to fund it, that's a huge piece. As a fire chief, you can ask for twenty-seven positions in next year's budget, right? But you have to be able to fund that, and that's a critical piece in how you staff and deploy a fire department. What are the community expectations? That typically is the dais, you represent the community, so you know what the community expectations are. So you, you have to tie all of these factors in when you talk about staffing and deploying fire departments. Facility and fleet, uh, again, we give you multiple recommendations for each existing facility, I, I, I know you will as you go through this report, you'll, you'll read each one of those. The most important piece is installing industry-standard exhaust recovery equipment, okay, in each one of the fire stations. Start a diesel motor up, it emits carbon, uh, and there are some, some, some very good systems out there that take that carbon and either exhaust it out or, or run it through a filter. You should go back and, and take a look at, uh, including fire facilities and facilities maintenance fund and having facilities maintenance take care of it. I could tell you as a fire chief, I could tell you as a firefighter, I could tell you as a company officer. We're not building maintenance pros, we're fire pros. Fire chiefs are fire pros, they don't specialize in facility maintenance, they don't, they don't specialize in engineering HVAC systems, okay? You build these capital facilities, they're important facilities in the community, so they need the attention of the pros from facility maintenance. Uh, and develop and implement a capital replacement program for vehicles. Again, you know, fire engines today, uh, a year or so ago, you voted, you approved two fire trucks, okay? You know the expense, you just went through that. It's good to have a plan in place so you know when each one of those have to be replaced and what year you're going to replace them is, and you have your ten-year plan or your twelve-year plan, whatever plan that you're comfortable with, that, that meets some benchmarks, some national benchmarking, and we give you that in the report. But it's good to know when that's coming up, so you can plan for it. You can amateurize when you buy a new, you know how to do this, you can amateurize, do what it is you want to do, but it's, but it is an important piece because it costs so much money and it's not coming down. It's not going to get any cheaper in five years to buy, to replace your ladder trucks, not going to be any cheaper. It, they're seven, eight, nine-hundred-thousand dollars now, that's just what they cost, okay? Uh, we recommend that the, uh, regional communication center develop an alternative backup center, uh, that's just important for your continuity of operations. It's good to have that in place away from where the current one is, because if something happens where the current one is, you want to be away from that, so hopefully you can, you can move your resources and then continue your communications. Automatical vehicle locators, uh, that's an important piece, that, that, that modernizes your response capabilities, uh, the dispatch center will be able to look and see where all your units are, so if you have a unit out and they're closer to that call, they can dispatch them, they can move them around, uh, depending on where the demand of calls are. And utilize, fully utilize, uh, medical priority dispatch. This may be able to eliminate some of your response to the lower, uh, priority calls, okay? For which the quick response has little or no impact, okay? Very important. Wildland, and then we'll close this up. The wildland issue for the city of Prescott, uh, or in the larger Prescott Response Basin is typically referred to, and we already spoke about that, as urban wildland interface, okay? It's what you have, you have structures and you have wildland, you have brush, uh, et cetera, and that particular fuel burns, and then when you get closer to the structures, now you're into the man-made, uh, fuels and then et cetera, then, then you have a larger fire problem. Prevention, the fuel management, education, suppression of the fires, or all the actions that come together and link together to mitigate or eliminate, uh, or respond to the risk. The key, the key to all of this is ensuring a defensible community, defendable wild urban interface areas, got to be able to defend those. Again, the fire department gets that call and they respond, the first priority is the, the, the structural protection, the protection of the people and, and the buildings, okay? We hope that we have a, a good program in place and we hope that we have a preventive program in place where the community is very aware of what the, what the fire problem is in and around their structure and they can assist us, okay? That's, that's the biggest piece to this is the prevention piece, just like fire prevention in, in buildings, when the, when the built, when the fire inspector goes into all the business occupancies and he points out different things, that's just not a drill, that's to prevent fires, that's to identify issues in those buildings to prevent fires. Good fire prevention programs, sprinkler systems, et cetera, create a defendable community in structure fires and building fires. Fuel mitigation staff, it's important to understand that, that they are not deployed to active wildfire scenes, I mean, they're, they have a responsibility and a job and that's what their jobs should be. The fire suppression crew responds to fires. Again, the preparedness, identifying necessary firefighting capabilities, implementing coordinated wildland prevention programs. wildland prevention programs, that's all very important. When you look at what your risk is, and how you defend that risk. Firewise, I know you have 15 firewise communities in the city of Prescott, and I just read where you have 26, I think, in the Prescott area, okay, in the region. That's good. That is, that's good. It's excellent, quite honestly, but you, but you could have more if you focus on this prevention. And go into these neighborhoods, and you establish firewise programs, and you, you establish these defendable communities. It's, I, I had, I went through it in Florida as a fire chief. I came from Virginia. We don't have those problems in Virginia, and I learned it very quickly in Florida. I mean, you have to have those, just as, just as the mayor and the mayor pro tem said. I mean, you have communities in the middle of the forest, okay? They just, that's just how it happens. But, but they do that for a reason. That, that's the way they want to live. They like that. They like having that around them. But they have to be educated that you have to, you have to, there's some self-accountability here. I mean, the fire department cannot respond and defend your community if you allow that brush and, and, and that vegetation to grow within five feet of your house. In a fast-moving fire, where, where it is, where you have wind helping you, and all of the things that go into making that fire a little bit more critical than, than it was, if it didn't have those factors, affects that building, okay? They have to understand that. Very important. Because of the importance for everything I just said, the fire chief, the new, the new fire chief has, has proposed a reorganization of his organization, of restructuring, that consolidates the fuels mitigation officer position with the fire prevention division. Again, fire prevention. And, and the focus, and the shift has to be fire prevention, tying in with structures, businesses, wildland, the community, okay? And then it, and then it takes the fire suppression piece, and it puts it with fire suppression. Because when the bell goes off, it's fire suppression companies responding, okay? It's, it's just that important. And again, we recommend, we strongly recommend that the wildland division be eliminated, fuels mitigation personnel be reassigned to the fire marshals division, so that prevention is the focus. Educating the community is the focus. Fire prevention does fire inspections, the public education. It all ties together. It's just critically important. This is what it looks like. We give you current, and we give you new in the report. Again, if you look across the top, you have a fire chief who's the senior leader, manages the organization, department head. And then you look at the, the four boxes directly under that, that's the senior staff. I mean, they're, they're program managers. They should be spending the majority of their time improving and forecasting the future for the organization. That's their job. As senior officers in the agency, that's what they, they're not there to operate and have their hands on the day-to-day operations of, of, of the department. That's what battalion chiefs and company officers do. They got their hands on everything all day long. They operate the system. But improving the system and forecasting the future, and strategically planning, that's the senior staff of the fire agency. Those are your program managers. And it takes the wildland suppression function and puts it in emergency services branch, and it takes fuels mitigation and puts it into fire prevention branch, under community risk reduction. The response to wildfires is to utilize the Prescott Basin Response Model, which, which is very intricate. That's, that's where your mutual aid companies come in. That's where the incident commander identifies quickly how many acres, what the urban interface issues or concerns are, and then calls for the appropriate resources. Automatic aid, forest service, I understand, Mayor Pro Tem, you're, you know, your concerns with that, but statewide mutual aid, and actually what occurs and what should occur, and what does occur, is resources are increased as the situation progresses. That's not just for wildland, though. That's a building fire downtown. And you pull up on a building fire downtown, you have heavy smoke or fire coming from the second or third floor, you, you immediately call for additional resources, just because you know what you have to do, and you're familiar with that structure. Same things occur on wildland fires. You get there, it's three acres, but we have an urban wildland interface issue, so we need more help, because we got to protect this row of struc, because it, because it becomes a row of structures. It's not one or two. Typically, it's a row of structures, because you see how fast the fire is moving. You know what the humidity level is. You know what the, you already know what the, what the dryness level is, okay? The Keys-Biram Index. You already know what all of that is at the beginning of the day. I mean, these are professionals. They're trained. Your fire department is trained. They get their fire forecast every morning. They know what the temperature is going to be, the humidity is, how dry it's been, et cetera, okay? That's all I have for you. Thank you for your patience.
Come on.
One of the decisions that the council has been asked to make and has deferred until this report is whether or not we should have a separate fire administration building, remodel the fire administration building. Where should we house fire administration? I didn't see anything in the report, just, you know, taking the time here to, to look at that. Is it something you did address, or chose not to?
No, ma'am. I've worked in both. I've worked at city hall, or county administration complex. I've worked separate from that, you know, in a sort of headquarters, fire station. I think that's, I think that's the manager's recommendation to you, where he would like to have his staff, you know, immediately available, or, or what have you. Either way works.
Okay.
I'll tell you fire chief's preferences, no, I won't tell you that. But, you know, I mean, that, that's, really, that's the manager's recommendation to you.
Mayor, I do have a question. Looking at your report, I'm, I think I've always been more concerned about the safety of the facilities and, and the trucks, and the equipment on the trucks. There was a time when we had one thermo, thermo camera in the battalion chief's vehicle, which I thought was ridiculous to know that we had a community that only had one camera, so they all have cameras. The, the vehicle locator is important to me. Would you suggest that, based upon the facilities and the condition the facilities are in, that that be, I guess, report be put together by fire department personnel, or would you suspect that should come out of our facilities department?
To, if the question is, who should evaluate each facility, and then, and then come back with a report on systems?
Right.
HVAC systems, HVAC systems, et cetera, to the manager, so that they can prioritize what, so you can prioritize, and he can prioritize what needs to be fixed? That should be somebody from facilities, maintenance, engineers that are trained to do that.
Because I, I think it's important, knowing that in the past, Councilman Lamerson and I have toured the facilities and identified things that we saw personally wrong with them. But I also believe that when you are on top of the game, and you have a, a repair program that is ongoing yearly, that those facilities, even though they're old, I'm old, doesn't mean I'm, I'm done. But I think you can do some tune-ups of those places and make them absolutely adequate. Based upon your conversation, it seems that the fire stations are adequately placed at the present time, that I think we need to take care of what we have. And I think that's probably one of the most important things that a community can do, is make sure that the working environment, the people that are serving the community are at the highest standards that we can make them.
We make those recommendations, sir, in the report.
Yeah, you know, thank you for the overview, and, you know, being as we just got your report today, and it's a pretty, pretty lengthy book, is there going to be an opportunity where maybe we could read over everything that's in there, and then come back and ask further questions, or are you guys out of here?
Well, they're, they're out of here, but, but as they indicated, they are continuing resource to the extent that the city wants to use them as a resource, and I, and I think we certainly have a long-term interest in maintaining a relationship to take advantage of, of this as a very well-informed and capable resource. More specifically, when we, after the police presentation, the ICMA police presentation, you know, you recall that we said that we would be back to have additional public discussion, you know, or council discussion of that? And using that as an example, we are planning to have, in fact, at next week's workshop on September 2nd, the first discussion of what those ICMA recommendations were for the police department. And that will not just be one discussion, that will be a review of the recommendations and some initial commentary and prioritizing by the police department. We would expect the same procedure or process with the fire department recommendations, where we will schedule a workshop date, and we'll talk about the recommendations. And at any time before or after those council discussions, if we have the need of specific information from ICMA, we will ask them to assist us.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Paralleling, fellow counsel, thank you for your report. It looks pretty thorough. I'm gonna need some time to digest quite a bit, along with some of the comments that Councilman Blair made. I'm not only concerned with the health and safety of the people of Prescott, but the health and safety of our firefighters is a top priority. And I appreciated the recommendations for the exhaust systems, so that they're not sniffing the diesel fuel on a, on a daily basis and things like that. So I'll take some time, and I'm sure I'll have more questions. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Anyone else?
Could I make a comment to both the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Blair?
Go right ahead.
Having to do with the facilities, obviously, that's an important issue for the council. And one of the things that I try to do when I teach council members and other elected officials, is, is to remind you that a, a police station, a fire station, is not just a shelter, but it's a tool. And it has to be looked at differently than just a simple building. And so if you have these kinds of concerns that we've expressed, there are engineers and architects who are experts in police and fire station design, and those are the kinds of people you should rely on, give you advice as to the kinds of things you need to do to make them safe, and also to get the longevity out of them. I mean, I, I've been a longtime public safety director, police chief, the fire chief, and city manager, but I'm not an expert in the facilities. There are people who are experts in the facilities, and it would be worthwhile, I think, for you, you know, as a community, to reach out to them and have them take a look at your, because there's, there's things that would not be readily apparent to watch that would be apparent to them.
Thank you for your comments, especially since we're on TV, because the people who actually pay the bill are the taxpayers, and they need, need to hear. We've, we've got some necessities that for the health and safety of everybody in the community, especially our firemen, there's some expenses coming down the pipe, so, thank you.
Mayor, I have one question here. I know there's probably two methodologies to, between police and fire on your, your assessment, but, and again, this is a lengthy report. In your, your analysis, did you put out a survey of what the fire department is looking from, from us as a legislative body and/or the staff?
We didn't do that piece. We, we, the survey that we did to the firefighters, you may have had one or two pieces, councilmen, in there, but all of that is in that appendix, and, and I think, I think you'll find what you're looking for.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Which I'll ask, and then we'll, we'll thank you for being here, but it was not part of your charge, but some fire departments heavily depend on reserve units, some don't have anything to do with the reserves. Any comments?
Yes, sir. When I was the fire chief in Loudoun County, I had 450 career firefighters and about 1,400 volunteers. So we relied heavily on, on reserves or volunteer firefighters. That, that is a program that takes a lot of energy to maintain, because you have to get people in, you have to get them trained, have to keep them interested. It's not that it cannot be done. Just understand that when you, when you make that decision, it just takes a lot of effort, because you have to keep their interest level. However, when you do, it's very rewarding, it's rewarding to the citizenry, and it does create a very effective fire department. It, it does. It, 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 it does help tremendously.
Okay. Thanks for being here, gentlemen. Thanks for a good job.
Thank you for having us.
We have a lot of, a lot of work to do.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That said, it's about 12 minutes until 3:00. We have another meeting starting at 3:00, so this meeting's adjourned.